Let's call to order the committee of the whole meeting for March 26, 1:00 P.M. Approval of agenda, recommendation of the committee of the whole meeting agenda for March 26, 2025 be approved is circulated. Counselor Bailey, Counselor Rich, all in favor? Thank you. Adoption of the minutes, recommendation of the minutes of many of the whole meeting held on March 12, 2025 be adopted. Counselor Bushell, Counselor Rich, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Before we get started, do we have Malcolm live yet?
Malcolm, I'm trying to promote you as a panelist, but you haven't accepted. If you are there, please accept.
We have Coram.
We just want to make sure that if he's hanging in the... Okay.
He's there. Yeah, there he is.
Okay, there he is. Okay, so we have Member Legislative Assembly update, our MLA for the Shoe Shop, David Williams. I'm assuming he's online? Not online, not on the ga- not in the gallery. Does someone want to reach? Do you have David's?
He did confirm. Yeah, let me just go to the next one.
Maybe he hasn't promised to come in?
Maybe. Oh, they must have a number phone on that website.
It confirmed on Monday.
It's about time ago. Could I suggest we just switch the delegations order?
Yeah, we could. We could do that, but if he's going to be in, like, and then he's just driving into the park. Can we give him a minute? Because he might have other things.
Yeah, he might.
Pass to get to, too. But yeah, let me give him a call.
Without giving him a minute.
Well, no, no, we could do the first delegation, then follow them, but...
I think the girls are just wanting to do their delegation release.
They do. They want to get back to work. Oh, no.
They might not want to get back to work.
Hi, stay with there, please. Yes.
Swappy.
Hey, ladies, we are going to move on. We are going to the Okanagan Regional Library. Danielle, how are you?
Good, I'm good. How are you?
Good, welcome.
Thank you so much for having us. And thank you for putting us in on your, at your council meeting. So, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Danielle Hubbard. I'm the CEO of the Okanagan Regional Library. I think probably well know that because I was out here less than 12 months ago presenting to you. And so this is part of my annual process of going around and delivering a presentation to each of the member councils of the ORL. Last year was the first year I had done that as CEO, so it was quite introductory what I presented last year. I was saying who I was and how the library functions and how we're funded and how we're structured. So this year I thought I would do something a little bit more fun and engaging, I think. I'm just going to get this out of my elbow room. So this year Angie and I are both here to kind of bring the library alive a little bit more. So I'm going to highlight five system-wide programs and initiatives that the Okanagan Regional Library operates and provides to all of our communities. And then I'm going to hand the floor over to Angie, who works just around the corner, running the Sycamore branch, and she's going to tell you what's happening here at the Sycamore Library. And then I've included my contact information at the end of the slide, so if any of you want to contact me or follow up on anything afterwards, by all means, feel free to do. So if we go on to the next slide. Okay, so the first program that I wanted to highlight is our number one most popular actively participated in program through the whole Okanagan Regional Library system, and that is Summer Reading Club. So if any of you have been into our library here in the months of July and August, especially July, that is our busiest time of year, because all of our libraries are running an extra array of children's programs in July and August. And a big part of the incentive of the Summer Reading Club is that kids come in, they sign up, they get reading logs that have fun pictures and fun, beautiful designs. The kids keep track of what they're reading, and then they get prizes and incentives as they hit certain milestones. So the idea really is to combat the summer reading loss that can happen and summer learning loss that can happen. And so last year, our theme was World of Curiosity, and that's what those little promotional bookmarks are for. And then this coming summer is called Color Your World. So we build our programs loosely around those themes, but of course, they're really creative, open-ended themes, so that Angie and our other community librarians can make of the theme what they will. And if you go on to the next slide, I didn't want to make this presentation too heavy on the numbers, but I did want to present a few statistics that I think really illustrate the fact that libraries are not dying, we're not going anywhere. We're actually seeing higher and higher usage rates in all kinds of areas. So for Summer Reading Club alone, these are some of our statistics from 2024. So in 2024, we saw a 35% increase in participation in the program, and that goes all the way back to pre-COVID. So for a while, we had a little dip during COVID, which I think most of the world had a bit of a dip in COVID times. And then we've really seen that at this point, we're 35% above where we were before COVID. In 2024, we had over 8,000 kids register for Summer Reading Club, which was the highest number of registrants we've ever had for Summer Reading Club. And actually, 2023, the year before last, had also been the highest number we'd ever had. So there's been this upward trajectory of more and more people coming into our branches and signing up for this program. And again, in 2024, we've had just under 29,000 kids and parents attending programs. So not all of that, of course, is at the Sycamore branch. I'm sure you account for many of them, but that is throughout our system. But again, that's like an upward trajectory over the years. If you go on to the next slide. So switching gears, one of the other services that the ORL provides is digital resources. So last year, when I was going out and doing council presentations in all of our communities, a question that came up often was, like, are people still checking out books as much as they used to? Are people still reading as much as they used to? That came up at a number of my council presentations. So I wanted to talk about electronic resources here, because our public, or sorry, our physical books, like traditional library books, are continuing to circulate as much as they ever did. So at this point, they're actually also circulating more than they did pre-COVID. But where we're really seeing a huge increase is in online reading, which I think is not too surprising to anyone, but I did want to highlight that that's a service that the library provides. So most of our electronic resource usage is eBooks and audiobooks. I know I do most of my reading by listening to books on my phone, particularly because I spend a lot of time driving, and so I can read as I drive. But if you move on to the next slide, again, we just pulled a few stats here. So last year, these are 2024 stats, just to give us like a full year of data. So in 2024, we circulated almost 800,000 digital books. So those are books that you download typically through the Libby app, it's called, and then you can read it off of your tablet or computer or phone, whatever device you want to use. And that was an 8.6% increase over the previous year. So that's, I would say, representative of the last several years, has been kind of in that 10%-ish level of increase each year, more people checking out books. And then audiobooks have a steeper level of increase. So last year, we circulated almost 500,000 audiobooks. And again, that's the way I do most of my readings, but I certainly don't account for all of those. I account for like a couple dozen. And that was a 23% increase. So that illustrates to me that I'm not alone in preferring to do my reading that way if I can. And then digital magazines, this one actually surprised me when we pulled the data, because I think our physical magazines, some physical magazines are going by the wayside. Like, there are a lot of magazine publications that aren't releasing physical magazines anymore. But interestingly, there's been a 61% increase in people borrowing digital magazines through the library. So that shows magazines, like books, they're just kind of shifting their format, but they're still being read and borrowed more than they were before. So over 200,000 magazines and serials that were circulated last year. Then, yeah, so next one here, one of the collections that we introduced over the past five years or so is what's called Library of Things Kits. And so Library of Things is any sort of physical collection that isn't a book. So it's like not maybe a traditional thing that you picture at the library. But some of the examples here, there's a birding backpack kit, there's a radon detection kit, there's a variety of robotics kits, there's a dental hygiene kit, the one with like this strange creepy mouth down at the bottom. And a number of these kits we developed in partnership with other organizations. So the dental one, for instance, interior health supported us in providing the information and making us all the information we had, and that kit was accurate. And then if you go on to the next slide. So so far, we have 22 different kits in circulation. Right now, we have one staff member responsible for building all of those and curating them. And that was because we're like, are these going to catch on or not? Are people going to be interested in this collection? And I would say they certainly are. So in 2024, they circled almost 2,000 times. So I think that's an area that's worth developing further. And I did bring, I have a queue to do a show and tell that will take 37 seconds. So I brought, I brought our Braille kit. So this is one of our Library of Things kits that we just released last month, I think it is. So it's actually a Lego Braille kit. So how it works is it has five packs of Lego pieces, and each Lego piece is a letter in the Braille alphabet. So I did not know this about Braille until I checked out this kit, but apparently each Braille letter is a grid of six potential spots. So the spots can be arranged in different ways, and that does make all the different letters of the alphabet, which works really well for Braille Lego pieces. So there's a cue card or a cheat sheet, whatever you want to call it, that shows what all the letters are. And there's packs that have each of the different letters of the Braille alphabet. There's one of those Lego sheets where you can stick the pieces on to form different words. There's also a couple of Braille picture books down at the bottom. So if you have a child who's learning Braille or a family member who's learning Braille, it has the written English and then the Braille English as well. And then there's also the part of the kit that I personally like the best is a muffin tin with six tennis balls, which allows you to make all the different Braille letters. So this would be one letter configured this way. I wish I knew off the top of my head which letter this is. And then, like, this would be a different letter, and this would be a different letter. And what we learned while researching to build this kit is that this is actually a tool that people do use to learn Braille, because for most of us, it's really hard to develop the sensitivity to read six tiny dots, whereas this is much more tactile and easier to, easier to learn. So we have this kit recently entered circulation as well as our other kits. So if you can move on to the next slide. All right, I'm just trying not to drop Lego all over myself. I wanted to highlight the role that all of our branches play as emergency light lines in our communities. So we have 30 branches, some of them in big cities like Kelowna, some of them in smaller places like Sycamore, some of them in really tiny places. So on my way back to Kelowna today, I'm going to visit our branch in Silver Creek, which is very tiny. So what this looks like plays out a bit differently in each of our communities, but in our big urban centers, we see that the library is a place for people who are experiencing homelessness, don't have places to be. Library is really a lifeline for them. And as I think we're all very aware, we live in a part of the world where climate change is increasingly a challenge and a big concern. And so the other year, two years ago, when we had the horrible fire season, people were really using our branches as an air-conditioned place that didn't have smoke in it. And we were keeping some of our branches open extra hours to provide that space of refuge for our communities. In some of our communities, just down the road in Enderby and in Armstrong, the ORL actually has service agreements with the city to stay open if there is a heat dome or a cold snap. So in those communities, if the news is forecasting that there will be a heat dome, then the city administration phones the library. If we can find the staff to do it, we'll stay open into the evening or over the weekend or whatever would be the appropriate length of time. And then after the heat dome has passed, then the library invoices the city office. And I, my understanding is that those two communities can access provincial funds to offset those costs. So what exactly that looks like can be different, but I'm really happy to enter into those conversations if that's something that Sycamore is interested in exploring. Otherwise, we're certainly here as a free, open, public space that people are welcome in. And if you move on to the next slide, oh, yep, sorry, that's just to say we're conditioned. And there's the next slide. So in a moment, I'm going to pass things over to Angie. But one of the thrusts of my presentation last year, which I want to reiterate this year, is really, really thanking your council for your support of the library and the funding that you provide us. About 80% of our funding is municipal funding, tax levies. So I really appreciate the support of all of our communities. We do receive a much smaller percentage of our funding from the provincial government. And two years ago, we received an additional one-time kind of bonus chunk of funding from the province called the Provincial Enhancement Grant. And so one of the things I've really prioritized as CEO is making sure that that Provincial Enhancement Grant has made its way out into each of our branches, benefit our, our branches and our communities. So here in Sycamore, we've allocated, I believe, $20,000 it is to replace the circulation desk, to make it smaller and more flexible and allow Angie and her team to have more space to do other work. But actually, at that point, I'm going to hand things over to Angie so she can tell you what's happening here in Sycamore.
Thanks, Danielle.
Hello, everybody. I'm Angie Vandenberg, Community Librarian over here at Sycamore Library. So I'm just going to briefly talk about some of the things that we've been doing for the community, with the community. We've, we've kind of realized that in general, for adult programs, winter is best, because that's when there's a need. In the summer, people are busy. So we've got some great winter programs that lots of people are enjoying. We do murder mysteries a couple of times a winter, and they fill right up, and people are extremely happy that we're doing them. I get asked to do them more every month, but I'm not doing that yet. A lot of work. But, and this, this winter, we started a program every Saturday morning. It's called Keep Moving. And we, a group of people have been meeting at 9:30, so a half hour before the library opens, and having like a gentle activity of some sort to just keep people moving. And we've had videos where we'll do chair yoga. We've had someone come in and do hula hoop lessons. We've had someone come in and do Tai Chi. So it's been really great and actually very popular. So, and we're going to, next weekend's our last one, and then we'll do it again next fall, because it's once again a winter thing when people seem to need winter stuff to do. And paint nights and whatnot, but they, they fill up quick, and people are really happy to have something to do in the winter. So that's been nice. And this time of year, we've noticed families are coming a lot, and they're staying and playing. And we've got families, groups of families that come, and they all, they know where we keep the toys, and they bring the toys out, and we're playing with those. And we're doing monthly letter scavenger hunts that the kids know are there, and they're, and they're bringing their families in to do, and the escape puzzles that we do. I was only doing a couple a year, and the kids have convinced me to change them every month because they like them. And so we're, we've got lots going on for families and for anyone who wants to come and enjoy the library. And oh, right now, we've got baby chicks in the library. I think they're leaving today, so if you're interested, there's three. They're really cute. And, and we've just had the, a partnership that we've got with the Eagle Valley Community Support Society is the Little Goose Program that's going on right now in the library. So this is the fourth one today, and next week, there's another one. But they come in and they do a Little Goose Program, and families with little guys are coming in and singing songs and just having fun.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're just keeping busy, and it's, it's great. People are, you know, learning that there's always something to do at the library, so.
Great. Thank you, Angie, for all that you guys do in there. Yeah, we appreciate it. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Rich?
Yes, through the chair. Angie, I just want to thank you. I hear about this in town all the time. The murder mysteries are like, that is the talk of the town. Which is so funny. I get pictures of people in their little costumes because you do the themed. You got to be in like 1970s gig, and you murdered whatever. It's like, it's like Clue. So that is really wonderful. The Unplug and Play, again, thank you again for supporting that. Seed Swap. I'm always supporting the chicks and farming and teaching the kids how things go. So we just really appreciate how inventive you've been, that it's not, the door is open, welcome to the library, find a book, leave. It's, you've got all these incredible things going on, and you've made it really wonderful for our community, and we really appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, I'd just say, I guess this is not my grandmother's library, right? It's really, it's really evolved into a lot of different things. It's not just books. There's just a ton of services. And, you know, I really appreciate the presentation, because I'll, I'm not a huge library user, but it's great to have all these different resources that hit on many different needs in the community. And I think a lot of people probably don't know that's the evolution of the modern-day library, is that there's so many different things that you can do. You can, like, get digital magazines, for example. You don't have to go buy it, go to your library. So, you know, I think that that's excellent to have that knowledge continually go up and by your stats, you're obviously doing a really good job, because people are catching on to it. But yeah, huge thanks, and always like to see that. I've seen it on rant and raves, the murder mysteries, and I've heard from people in the restaurant about the murder mystery. I'm like, what? So I had to go look, and I was like, wow, that's, that's really cool for a library to do. It's, it's outside the box, but it's engaging people into your ecosystem, and, and that's, that's awesome. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. There's one coming up on April 11th, if anyone's interested. Last one of the year's of all.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, Angie, I'm really intrigued by the murder mysteries. I need to learn how to do that with the seniors. I think that they was very exciting about that. Oh, come on, the 11th. Yeah.
Go ahead, Counsel Bushell.
Yes, through the chair. Danielle, thank you very much. That was very interesting, your presentation. And really appreciate you coming up all the way up from Kelowna. And, and yeah, no, I, I really want to say, Angie, you and Belinda and your team are your supporters are great for the community. Thank you very much for all you do.
And I just want to echo what Counsel's just said. Thank you guys very much. You know, there was a time when you're fearful for libraries because technology was changing so fast, right? And you thought that perhaps you would lose that, that space that was, has always been a comfortable, safe space where you could get that book or go and sit. And I'm so happy that they have evolved into much more than that, and that the future is still a library in a space where people can gather, kids can come, they can meet other kids. And now, you know, you've expanded it to so much more than that, where it is now a community space, not just a space to go get a book, but actually a community space where everyone is welcome, and there's something for everyone to do. So we're, on behalf, we're happy to support and will continue to do so. It's a cause, I think, that all of us believe in. And, I mean, we're kind of, we're, we're old school. Most of us are old school sitting here, so we truly believe that, yeah, it is, yeah, it's great. Unplug and Play is a great program. And yeah, we will support you, and thank you so very much for making the trip out here. We do appreciate it.
I was just going to say too, Counselor Evans isn't here today, but he is currently the representative on the ORL board, and he's really wonderful and supportive. So if you ever do want to know more about the library, feel free to contact me directly or, or talk to Counsel Evans, too, of course, or go down the hall and talk to Angie.
Thank you, guys. And fortunate for you, our MLA for the Shoe Shop was sitting in here, so, you know, you never know, right? Dave, you're up. Welcome. Have you, Counsel, have you all met?
We've met now.
Okay, okay.
For those of you, like, met before.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm David Williams. I'm the MLA for Savonarm Shoe Shop. Any questions, please feel free to ask me. The little bit about myself is that I currently live in White Lake. I just drove all the way around. I understand what it's like living in Sycamore, so I'm very familiar with the area. As the MLA, I am your advocate between here and Victoria. So as problems arise or you see issues, please get a hold of our office. Since I've just got elected, we're slowly putting together a really good team, and we're actually moving the constituency office, which will be open May 1st. It'll be right across the Piccadilly Mall in Savonarm. And it'll be a fully functioning office, probably a lot better than the old office, which was there for a long time. My current team currently consists of one person that does office administration, another one that basically works on case files. So anything that's fairly simple to solve, Brian usually takes care of it. Anything that's a little more difficult, he usually moves up the ladder to me. And I usually deal with it when I'm home on the weekends or when I'm available. Or I go knocking on their door in Victoria. The third person is communications. So one of the things I want from the constituency office is actually to promote the area. As you know, we live in an area where small business is really important. And anything we can do to promote small business or local businesses and keep them from moving to Alberta is our goal. And so we advocate for that, and people want information, so anything I can do to alleviate your problems. So people go to the website, they can find all the information, it solves them, only here bothering you. The fourth person that we hired was Bonnie Gavin, who you probably know. She actually worked for Greg. And she has good connections within the community and very well-known, and so she's kind of a conduit between the old and the new. So all together, we'll have a very good team. Now, as for current events, currently sessions in Victoria. Since we've been in, of course, we're not the government, so all we can do is advocate the government on your behalf and the residents' behalf on trying to either push legislation through that we want or push bills through, through private member bills, or prevent them from being, from, prevent them from doing anything that we find harmful to our area. And so far, I think that we've been very effective. One thing, I don't know if you're all familiar with, you probably are, is Bill 7, which I sent a letter over to you, to the council here. Bill 7 is a bill that the NDP want to push through. Basically, it gives them unlimited control to pass legislation and pass mandates without any other approval, without going through the normal process where we all have to vote, or they have to be debated. I personally don't feel that's such a good plan. It's supposed to be in response to terrorists, but you know what? We're only a plane flight away from going there and debating the issue and voting on it. So in order to act quickly, there's no, nothing has to be worked on overnight. So I feel that that's probably not a good bill, and I believe your council should support our effort in opposing it. Many other cities and municipalities, well, regional districts have, as well as Business Council and numerous other organizations. So going forward, I, I'm familiar with some of the issues around Sycamore. And thank you very much for not having many. I have to, I have to say that Sycamore is probably has a least number of problems. So of course, there's a lot of problems running around water and lands, and that's understandable. And I'm slowly working through that process. To give you a little idea what it's like in Victoria, since we were elected, from October 19th until, I think, after Christmas. To give you a little idea what it's like in Victoria, since we were elected, um, from October nineteenth until I think after Christmas, the new year, the the governing party, they weren't even answering their phones or responding, to give you an idea. So since I think they're trying to get everything organized and trying to get their people in place, since that time, um, it's been a little bit better. And I've met a couple of the departments in person, while not in person, I assume, even though it's in the same building, in person, but I've been in contact directly with some of the departments regarding some of the issues, including one that pertains to here. When it comes to the one layer that was sent from this council regarding the fireboat, the rescue fireboat house, I gave them a deadline of May first. I'm actually working with Slatson. I actually met with Mike Christian. And uh, just to make sure that they have no other objections to it, I asked Mike for a letter of endorsement. And he didn't have an issue with it. Now, saying that, yes, take this council, but the thing is, I don't think there's an issue there. And because I knew that they would come back with every kind of excuse in the world to not put it through for whatever reason. And so I took away all their excuses. They wanted to put it off until June. I said, no, because the reason being, May first, we're still in session. We can debate the issue. I can bring up question period. So I believe that that will be forthcoming. As for four shore licenses, I also made them aware of that. That's a little, little takes a little bit longer, um, because it's on the Narrows and it's almost on a case by case basis. But they're also well aware of that issue and I don't think there's a lot of resistance from Slatson regarding it. And I will take that a little bit further as time goes on. So that might take a little longer, but one by one will resolve the whole issue down there. Other than that, I don't think there's a lot of other issues. Slatson has some projects that they're working on here. But it really doesn't pertain to the city of Sycamore, but it's in this area. And we're working through those as well. Other than that, um, I hope everything's going well in Sycamore. We want to have a good, good year when it comes to tourism. I know that tourism is down. Another issue I know that's probably near and dear to most people here, and I get a lot of calls about, is the uh, the short term Tennessee and the Accommodations Act. We're working through that as well. Um, the fact is, is that I don't know how this council is handling it, but I know the regional districts, they're giving temporary use permits for people putting in suites. And there's some issues when it comes to recreational resort properties. Because no clarification, I'm gonna work on trying to get clarification from the government. Either written from them or we'll put through a bill along that line to try and resolve that issue. I don't think that'll be short term effort. But uh, right now, other municipalities and regional districts are actually doing it through their enforcement, basically non enforcement. But that really doesn't give residents who actually buy properties or or want to do work any kind of reassurances that's going to be a guarantee down the road, right? So over the long term, we definitely want to have some kind of clarity when it comes to that. And that's pretty well all the issues other than highway construction and uh, we're trying to get a little bit more transparency from the uh, people doing maintenance. And we'll be working on that and long before my term is out, we'll be transparent when it comes to maintenance and upgrades and what they have planned for you here. Other than that, if you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you, Dave. MLA Williams, thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. I think um, as far as this council goes, whenever we have an issue, we are not afraid to voice it and we will, we will write a letter and we will, you know, see what we can, what we can do for ourselves before we reach out any farther than than we need to.
And I welcome that because as a resident of the area, I believe that all elected officials should be answerable to the people.
Absolutely.
They should be an advocate. That's the reason they got elected.
Yeah. So I guess one of the things that we were discussing earlier was Bill seven. There's two sides to every story, right? So Counselor Bailey and I are discussing this earlier, you know, like roadblocks um, or you know, can be good and removing roadblock can be good. So does Bill seven put in more roadblocks or does it remove some of those roadblocks so more things can get done?
Neither. Actually, it doesn't really put a roadblock in. What it does, it gives them um, basically a free hand to pass laws or to take actions um, on any municipality, regional district, or any local government without any kind of intervention. So you'd have coast say, um, it's much the same as what they did with the zoning, where they can override your council and apply a rule whatever they feel. And as far as I know, that the bill, they they're looking for a sunset clause being two years. Uh, I think a lot of it probably has to do with the fact is that we've been a very effective opposition. And so we've been catching them at everything. But that hasn't been bad because they rolled back one of this stuff. Right? Um, safe supply, um, the carbon tax be gone of April first. But uh, now on the flip side, they're saying that they needed Bill seven for the fact that they have to react quickly. Okay, but point in law here. BC has a lease now trade with the United States and any other province in the country. No other province in the country is trying to pass any kind of legislation that you're close to this. So why does BC need it? That'd be my question. Right? Um, it seems like it's a bill of convenience for them. Unintended consequences. It's like I said, so they can turn around and pass a tax and nobody has no say. You don't have a say. Opposition has no say. Nobody has no say. They can put in mandates and they're totally enforceable because of legislation. So um, we live in a democracy and I believe that everything should be debated. I believe that everybody has the right to have a say. They can still vote in legislature if they have the votes, it would carry anyways. Now, as for responding quickly, I can't perceive any circumstance where the state says anything where we'd have to respond overnight. It's not like we're in a war. It's a trade dispute, not a war. And so I don't believe that anybody has to react overnight. And oftentimes, when you do react overnight, usually bad decisions are made. It's usually sober second thought should always be given to anything you do. Because there's always, I used to work in loss control insurance and there's always unintended consequences. So I think that healthy debate is always a good thing. Currently, they have a slim majority. So if it was a good law or good legislation, it'd be passed anyways.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rich and Counselor Bailey?
Through the chair. Hi, I'm Siobhan Rich, counselor. Welcome. MLA Williams, good to meet you and thanks for coming to Sycamore. Um, I'm just gonna throw it out there and I don't know, maybe I'm throwing Gord under the bus. For Sycamore, another big thing that we have is our backcountry, our section sevens, and that has been a huge battle for us. Um, and it's been stuck. And over to you, Gord.
He doesn't even know I'm doing this to him.
What do you mean, like?
I think it's just something you should be really aware of for us because our backcountry is huge for us for sledding and we're trying to um, do more motorized, non-motorized. We've got a bike park going in and we want to expand it. And again, we've just hit so many roadblocks on this. So maybe it's another conversation, but I would really like you to just put it on your radar.
Trust me, it's on the radar. I say I get, I get a lot of calls about that and uh, you'll be happy to know I'm actually meeting with the openers tomorrow. And so, yeah, that that's part of uh, the undrip and the drip situation, right? Um, it's not, Dripa did not get passed, right? So what they're trying to do is slow down any, any, any kind of legislation or any kind of use for backcountry. Again, that's basically, we need clarification. I don't think that it's going to move any direction in the short term. Right? So I would not be too concerned, but I don't think that they're going to be improving ski lodges up in the mountain either. Right? So it's, it's a waiting game. So right now, there is certainly no, there's no law that restricts people to use the backcountry right now. Because Dripa did not get passed. Now, the thing is, there's gonna be blowback from some indigenous groups. And there'll be some blowback from the government. So if they have to give out permits and stuff, this permitting is a real slope. Now, going back to permitting, even for something like that, or even just general permitting, actually, they're really, really, really behind on permitting. You know, sometimes you think it's deliberate, but as I've been in Victoria, I'm starting to find that, you know what, maybe it's not as deliberate as what most people think. They have way too much bureaucracy. Fact is, it goes through three or four people. And half the time, they don't even know what's going on. Right? Because it goes through so many people, it gets lost in a shuffle. And so, you know, a little bit of defense to them is that uh, it's not always, they're not always trying to be defiant. It's the fact that uh, it's just, there's just too many layers. Now, in some cases, like when it comes to recreational properties, it probably is a little bit of, the fact is a little bit of ideology behind that. And so they don't want to go ahead with too many things because they get blowback from indigenous groups and other organizations, right? Because they're trying to uh, eventually, if they had their way, they would like to pass Dripa.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So that has to do with the the backcountry tenures, as long as, I guess, if we're backlog right now and they can't issue new ones, just some insurance that they don't take away what we already have, right?
We will do everything in our power to make sure they don't. So um, even though we're opposition, we've been a very effective opposition. And every time they tried to do something, as you can see through either uh, press releases or through private member bills or through question period, or whether it be through social media, we've been stopping them at every, every point. And that will continue.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bailey?
Hi, Eve Bailey. Um, thanks very much for being here tonight. One of my pet peeves, I think all of council's pet peeve, or one of them, is the bureaucracy itself and how British Columbia is getting to this point of where you almost can't do anything without having to go through multiple layers of approval that slow everything down. And I wonder, excuse me here, I wonder if that are the intent behind Bill seven and and I guess it could go either way, right? They could, they could move more regulations without any debate, or they could take regulations off. But you know, that, that aside, I I think, you know, as we talked about economic tariffs coming on to British Columbia, it's going to affect everything. I'm a small business owner. It won't just affect, you know, the specific industries that go down into tourism, go down into restaurants, people's ability to go to hotel, people's ability to go to vacation. So I do think it's a province-wide threat in British Columbia. But you know, I I think you're right. Your party's been highlighting a lot of these things that face British Columbia as holding it back. But I wonder what, you know, as, you know, apart from Bill seven, what is the plan to start stripping some of these regulations of bureaucracies out of British Columbia so we can actually build things? That that is killing the province, the layers and layers and layers of of government that prevents us and the private sector from doing anything. And I think that's number one thing that is kind of harming us, right?
I totally agree with you. Okay, so again, we're the opposition. We're not the government. Until the government changes, I don't think that you're gonna see them stripping back any kind of bureaucracy. Um, that is, that is the NDP's base. When they talk about um, job growth, all job growth last year was basically government. Right? There was no private sector growth to speak of. Right? So and when it's there, I'll give you a, for instance, okay, and a lot of this I even didn't know. Okay, uh, BC wildfires, all the people that fight forest fires, a lot of times they don't want local input or they don't want other people involved. All the people that work for BC wildfires belong to BC. They're all unionized employees. So when you hear people saying they don't go up there and fight the fires at eight o'clock in the morning, there's probably, there's probably union rules against it. Right? So that's the bureaucracy that we're fighting. And the fact is, whether it be us or whether it be another three enterprise party, I think that any party coming in, well, first off, they're gonna look at the finances and they're gonna look at the layers and layers that you have to go through to try to get done this province and also taxation. And that's the things that they're probably gonna address. And obviously, the two bigger concerns would be the things that give the most money would be healthcare and education. Right? So those definitely have to be addressed. And I know there's issues when it comes to education. And that would go back to changing government as well. Right? And a lot of that, actually, a lot of, a lot of problems with education actually exist at the higher level because it's being pushed down to to the schools, districts. Right? So a lot of times trustees, you know, even though they want things a certain way, it's being pushed out to the top. So but again, as like you said, like, like I was saying about permitting, and that is true, you know, even I thought, you know, there is a deliberate attempt to try to you know, stop things. It's a little bit of both. Right? I think in some cases, they're trying to prevent things going forward. In other cases, it's just too much bureaucracy. It goes so many hands, they don't know. Another issue, um, like with Lance, Randy Neal's a fairly new minister, right? Just got elected this time around. When I want, I I see, I talked to Randy, same as I do you here today, right? And for a casual basis, right? Her, her parents actually live out in Burnham, right? And she sees the absolute use for the fireboat station, right? And so there's no issue personally on her level. Right? And uh, just to give you an idea, and so I contacted them, sent over all the stuff and told them my feeling on it. Tried to set up a meeting. And so they set up a meeting, we're gonna meet in person. And I could not meet with Randy Neal. And at the last minute, even though we're in the same building, they didn't want me to meet me face to face. And so I met four deputy ministers over Zoom. Because they're they're sheltering their ministers. So to give you an idea, that's just one department and I should have said two others like that as well. Right? So that's the other issue you're facing right now. So it's pretty hard to get decisions made if the person that pop can't make them.
Thank you. Yeah, you're absolutely right. We uh, we did try to set up a meeting with Minister Neal as well and uh, it went to deputy halls. And for us here in Sycamore, our lifeline is our water. So when we've got businesses on the channel that are trying to renew our water tenure or try to get a section eleven to upgrade or improve their docking system in the channel, and we're not hearing back from the minister for, well, to the boathouse, twenty months. Twenty months for that emergency rescue boathouse we put in the channel. But to other businesses in the channel that can't, that are, that are recognizing financial hardship right now because they can't get mortgages on their pieces of property because we can't get a water tenure to move some, or sorry, they can't get their water tenure renewed, or they can't get a section eleven to increase or decrease their dock space and make it work better. I mean, that is, that's ridiculous for a province that's promoting tourism and um, and projects and growing and so for them to come back, some of our tenures are eight years. We're waiting eight years.
The one I've seen on there is seven years. They go back seven years and and it's shorter than one year ago. I know.
Yeah.
Totally aware of that and I gave them the list. And the fact is that I went for the boathouse first. And basically, I never gave them a choice, but I said to kids, why? I said, you're gonna come back and tell me that there's a fish problem or indigenous are gonna have opposing views on this, right? And I said, so I'll take that away right now. And I said, I can probably get a letter of endorsement from Slatson. And I said, so then there is no excuse. And I said, this is something that's needed for the lake. I said, this is important for homeowners. It's important for for safety. And I said, so I won't take no for an answer. End of story. And they want to push it off to June. I said, no, May first. So I think it'll be forthcoming. Actually, I got an email from them, I believe yesterday, and they're asking me for the letter of endorsement from Slatson. I since fired off a letter to Mike to get me something over right away. And so that was all official. And so they will, the moment I get that, I will call them again. And then I'll work on the four shore licenses because I didn't want one to supersede the other to prevent the first one happening.
Thank you. Counselor Bushell?
Yes, through the chair. This kind of adds to, uh, Counselor Gord. Good to meet you, Dave. Um, just it adds to Siobhan and what Mayor Anderson was talking about is, um, you know, we have a notation of interest on the entire waterfront of Sycamore. It's put on by the province and Slatson. And uh, of course, we found out about it after the fact. So we're not, you know, we're supposed to be partners with the province and partners with Slatson, but we found out about it after the fact. And then this kind of goes to the meeting that was held at uh, Sam and Arm, uh, Greg Kylo. And I just, you know, had booked a small room for uh, when the province was actually looking at giving full rights to First Nations on Crown, Crown land. And uh, this kind of goes harbor situation out at the coast there where they, they gave uh, that, that First Nations group I guess approvals to issue for shore licenses or review. I guess approvals to issue foreshore licenses or review foreshore licenses. Is that, is that the direction the province is going, do you think? Or can you add to anything on these, this notation of interest that we have here?
I, I don't think that they'll pull that again. Right? I'm sure that the people of Pender Harbour and the Sunshine Coast aren't very happy. Nor do I believe that Randee Neal will be very happy about that either. Right? Apparently she did not know. Right? So I do not think that the government would try to pull that. I think what they'll try to do is probably stall until they try to, at opportune time, to call an election, try to win a majority. And then they'll try to push those agenda stream. That'd be my opinion, but that's just an opinion. But as for them going forward with anything else around here, all I can say is that I have a pretty good relationship with most of the bands around here. And the thing is, the best thing you can do is stay in contact with them and find out what they're doing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
And that's, and that's what I do, right? And because, okay, there's certain issues that you want pushed forward, they have issues they want pushed forward too. Right? So it's like a trade-off. So if I help you, this is what we get. And I think it's a lot better to work cooperatively with people because then we all succeed.
Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. Just a, a different note is I'm so glad you're here and I hope that you kind of may come into Sycamore's at regular event. We do the Best Canada Day probably in DC. So hopefully you show up there. Gord's like, oh, she's promoting the town. I totally am. So, and we have, I hope we see you out here a lot. We've got some really great events that, that, that come up through, through and I know we'll be reaching out to you, but it would be great to see your face and, and that you meet our community members and, and what we're doing here in Sycamore's because it's just a, I mean, you're in God's country. You're in the best place in the entire world. And I know probably everybody says that, but when you come and spend an afternoon out here, we've got, hopefully we see outlaws.
You know what? Everybody I meet at the ledge, they, the one thing they always say, oh, you live in such a beautiful place. Everybody, right? And everybody has connections here. They either have a sister, a brother, relatives, or they used to live here. Everybody has connections in this area. Everybody loves this area. And the thing is, and just like yourselves, I love the area as well. We want to keep it that way. So we want to, you know, collectively, we want to do the best we can for this area. We don't want to see businesses go broke and move into Alberta. We don't want to see empty storefronts. We don't want people having to sit home and can't afford to go do recreational things. You know, we live here, we want to keep it beautiful and we want people to utilize what we have. That's why we all live here. Right? So that's definitely where I come from. As for coming to events, I try to go to as many events as possible. I live out White Lake. I have done very few events in White Lake because I live there because I didn't want the perception that I, that I only just stuck near home. But I, I try to go to every area. This is a very large riding. It goes all the way out to Seymour Arm, all the way to North Shore, to the Squilax Bridge, all the way south down West Side Road. It takes in the Okeefranch, Armstrong, Enderby, Sycamore's and all the way past Three Valley Gap. So it's pretty hard to take in every single event, but I do try. And any event that's of importance or you think you need representation, I would always have somebody coming here. One of the persons that I hired is communications and he is a public speaker. So he can easily come to events even if I can't. Because it's always good to have eyes and ears in every community because every community is unique. Right? Your, you know, some of the issues here overlap. But generally speaking, issues that happen in Sycamore's are far, far different than they are in Armstrong. And they're far different than they are in our Shishwa. Right? So there's different little issues, you know, increases to both all the places, but you know, when it comes to taxation, carbon tax, but that, those are all pretty common things, right? But, but they're, you know, you know, Sycamore's is a little bit more dependent on tourism, same with our Shishwa. Right? Fires haven't been a big, big issue here. They're an issue of course, right? But you didn't have devastating fires like they had in our Shishwa. And so people here don't have confidence in our land like they do in our Shishwa. So there are some differences, you know, I'm actually working on the South end with the Okeefranch. I'm going to serve as a board director because they're in financial trouble, but that actually it's in this riding. And I don't believe in cattle culture, so I want to make sure that the place is preserved. And so I'm going to do whatever I possible to make sure that the Okeefranch stays the Okeefranch.
Awesome.
And so, you know, those are things. So the thing is, just like out here, there's places here historical significance. Right? We want to preserve those things too, right? So as for events, if you have events coming up, you want to promote events, send an email. And I'm more than willing to accommodate if possible. And some events are really important, like anniversary events or, you know, special events you're having to try to promote the area. And I think that's very important because you do want, you know, we want people coming here.
Absolutely.
It's good for them.
Counselor McCabe.
Hi, yeah. We've never met, so hello, Dave, and thank you for coming today. Counselor Malcolm McCabe, just wanted to thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Counselor Beach.
Thank you. Through the chair. Counselor Pam Beach, thank you for coming. I just, I really appreciate your comments about the beauty here and the natural, just, it's just a beautiful place. Everyone wants to come here. I, I would like to just bring up the fact that we're well aware that our waters are absolutely, our lakes are so important to us in terms of that's why people come here. And there are so many communities like us that depend on that water-based tourism. And, and we are feeling the pressure of, of protecting that water against invasive species and various things. So I just, I just want to heighten that issue that, that provincially, there is money allotted for checkpoint stations, but we don't feel that it's enough. We don't have 24/7 open checks, checkpoints for travelers to bring their boats and trailers through for inspection. So we're, we're, we're really looking to sort of build the ability to protect what we have here. It is our economy and our lifestyle.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm aware of waterways being important. Also, I'm aware of the invasive mussels. The fact is, there's not enough inspection currently. And unfortunately, I don't think the government's in a position where they can do a lot more funding. If anything, they're probably going to be cutting back funding because of the high deficits. What we need is actually grow business. And then because that enforcement would come along, because you'd have a bigger tax base to work with. Now, saying that, we also have a federal election coming. And currently Mel Arnold is the critic for fisheries. Believe it or not, they have quite a bit to do with that. Right? Because it's not just provincial funding, it's actually federal funding as well. And so usually, if you're in a critic role, like I'm, I'm the critic for BC Hydro and electric self-sufficiency. Usually the person that has that critic role usually gets that ministry when they form government. So there's a good chance that, that Mel may become the fisheries minister, which would be a very good thing when it comes to something like that because he's well aware of the problem. So I can't speak for him. All I can say is you've got to keep advocating, including, including walrus in Victoria. Right? They're aware, they're aware of the situation as well. And like I said about collaborating, if we can't get it done, then what I usually do is I try to put a consortium together, including the indigenous bands. Because if we don't have enough clout together, as a group we do. Right? So I don't take no for an answer. Something like that goes back to enforcement. I don't think that they're going to be hiring more people though. Right? There's other issues when it comes to waterways, the blooms. Right? That goes back to, you know, so much, you know, like the water's warming a bit. The fact that the, some waterways are actually getting lower. And so the water temperature is coming up a bit. The fact that there's a lot of sewage, you know, like the residue going into the lake. Like not so much Sycamore's, but you know, places like the South Shishwa, for instance, they should have a sewer system. Right? At least a secondary sewer system. And the thing is, I'm well aware of that as well. Right? So the thing is, that's something I would wish for. 20 years ago, I would have voted against it too because nobody wants to pay high taxes. But I think that the self-job has been very poor in the last while. The regional districts aren't very good. They, they deliver services and that's their job. Their, their job is not to sell or promote anything. And you need people that can actually sell something. And so if you want to sell people on, whether it be a sewer treatment, you know, sewer treatment, or whether it be regional parks, you have to have a group of people and you have to be very committed and tell people the benefits rather than the negative. You know, you tell people their taxes are going to go up, they're going to go down. If you tell them you have to replace your sewer, your septic system currently is going to cost 8,000 bucks, that 10 bucks a month doesn't seem like much. So it's all, now you sell it. And as for regional parks, that's, you know, again, I think that more green space we have around here, that are dedicated green space is good because it brings in tourism as well.
Yeah, thank you. And just, just to, to go back to Pam's point about the invasive species, the quagga and zebra mussels. I understand the province doesn't want to give money to support that because they've got a deficit and other things. But I think they're looking at it backwards. We're not going to have the tourism we do have. We're not going to have, we're going to have the deficit that is going to continue to grow if we've got invasive species in our water. So they're kind of looking at this backwards as opposed to prevention. They're looking at, okay, well, I guess we'll look, deal with that when we have to maintain it or put, throw maintenance against it, which is going to be millions of dollars compared to the 5 million right now, just to fund it for the year to.
I agree with you.
So, and Mel is well aware of this. So we've had some really good conversations. So he, he, you know, I know that he supports this, but we still need to fight it here in the province as well. Can never throw up our arms and go, you know what? I mean, there's no money. We just have to, we have to find the money. They have to find the money. And we're hoping that you can advocate for that when you get to the big house.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the thing is, I think that another way to approach it would be is that a lot of times, what the way I approach things and the way our party approaches things is that you have to do, there's a lot of lobby groups out there that, like the Sierra Club, Ducks Unlimited, all the people who use waterways, right? Outfitters. Right? If you get those groups on your side, and you have a bigger group, including, including the regional districts and, and cities municipalities, right? I think you have a lot more clout. And so they are more likely to listen. You individually as a city, yeah. Those are the background, right? But when they hear collectively from a lot of people, I think it gets their attention. Right? So, but they have so many issues to deal with. The thing is, which one do you pick first?
Yeah, exactly. Well, I guess, you know, some of the other things, issues that we're concerned about is recriminalizing as opposed to decriminalizing. I think that we've been strong advocates of, of recriminalizing illicit drugs. So definitely, that's a, a spot in Sycamore's.
We know safe supply hasn't worked. We also know that we need rehab rather than giving them safe supply. It's not easy to, to open up treatment centers because it's, you know, you can open a treatment center, but you also have to have the people there to work there. Probably what a lot of people don't know, actually, I, I meet regularly with Oaknaug College every month. And the reason being is that the last thing we want to do is form government. And you have doctors and nurses, but you don't have people take the blood or people to run the CAT scan. So I, we work together to try to look at every opportunity to keep kids in this region going to school. But also have people coming out of school with jobs that we need. So we are pretty active when it comes to doing a lot of different things. And I can speak for myself, but I can speak for us as a team. Everybody in the Conservative Party, they take their critic role seriously. And just as much as I'm advocating, they're doing the same thing. Right? So we, we, we meet with a lot of different groups to try to address these problems. So the time comes where there is a change of government, the fact is that we can react quickly. And so when it comes to recriminalizing drugs, as you know, Eleanor Sturges, where you have spoken about that, that's her passion. Right? And so, you know, it would be a common sense approach when it comes to drugs. You know, we never had homelessness or drug people on the street here, as long as I've lived here. And I remember about a year ago, I said, Oaknaug Mall, they have security, right? And I last went and hired security. I go like, wow. That's kind of wealth, right? And they said, yeah, because of the homeless problem, because of drugs and stuff, right? So. Yeah. So even if you're a small town, it's coming to us, right? So eventually everything hits here. So you have to address the problem. So we're well aware of the problem. You let things go so badly that they, where it's gone to now, it takes a long time to turn cable back. But it started somewhere, right? So we have to start today.
So I guess, thank you for that. And I guess one of the other things that would be on our wishlist is permitting and the reporting system that we have and what the province requires. And when I talked to that, we met with the Parliamentary Secretary for Rural Development last week and our CEO Dean and Bianca and I met and our concerns were with infrastructure. When the province is downloading, we have to expand our, our sewer system. So in the district of Sycamore's, so there's a report that we need to put together that's, and, and test our, our sewage. But it's a $360,000 report to tell them what they already know, to tell the province what they already know. So that's $360,000 worth of taxpayers' money that we have to pay for when that report's already been done just down the road. So.
I agree. Okay, so I was just at Bi Doctor. They do mushrooms. And so it's an industry that's on the South end of this riding, right? And he was telling me, they have to do the same thing. So they opened up the facility. They have to hire a consultant to come in and certify plus, right? They said, every other province, the province does it. So they got, say they got some grant funding, but they said that they still have to get a private consultant to come in and sign off. And in their case, it's not that much money, so it's not the end of the world. But they, they said that in every other province, they actually, the province does that. And so when it comes to what you're saying, again, that's cutting bureaucracy and actually having the government actually do their job. Right? As for permitting, yes, we need to get houses built quicker. At the CSRD, I probably, every employee down there, I think I got them. Right? So I have, you know, before Christmas, they were telling me, hey, Greg, you know, I got three occupancy permits through, right? Because he was so worried that I'm going to come down on them or something, right? But they're doing their best to try to get permits through, but a lot of that is because of the new climate action, right? They have to do so many different things and cover off and everything, right? So it's just gotten inundated with bureaucracy, right? You can't build simple no more. And there's also rules around, like, okay, like pre-bab homes, different things that you could put up that would be quicker. But there's no current legislation to allow that to happen. Right? If you go back to the seventies, when they actually built homes, the city actually put in infrastructure. And they got funding from the provincial and the federal governments. And houses got built quickly because they were simple. And because there wasn't a bunch of things that they had to meet. Whether it be climate standards, whether it be building codes. And so the more you add in there, the longer things are going to take. And so it is back to the, you know, like Department of Inefficiency. You need a Department of Inefficiency to get rid of some of the stuff and streamline a lot of the things. But again, I don't think that's going to happen in the short term. Although maybe, because the government's going to have to start cutting job jobs. Right? So they have to find a faster way of doing things. But again, who knows?
Thank you. Council, any more questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, David. Thanks for being here today. We really appreciate it. Are we off to now? All right. We have no department updates. We're just going to move to council reports. Let's start with Counselor McCabe. My paper ready.
Yes, I'd like to report that the weather is fine.
Hey, good.
Uh, yeah, I know. I, I don't have anything to report, but thanks for checking.
Dave, thank you. Oh, didn't you run into some folks down in Mexico?
Yes, I ran into a couple of developers from Sycamore's that they're developing Old Town Bay. One fellow and the other fellow is, I think, the owner of Mara Hills Development up there. So two, two different developers I met in one day.
On vacation.
On vacation in Malaki, yeah.
In Malaki. It's, this is where we all break into. It's a small world. Thanks, Counselor McCabe. Counselor Rich.
Ah, through the chair. So yesterday I went to the AGM for the chamber, which was wonderful. And our very own Gord Bushel got the King Charles Coronation medal, which was pretty fantastic. And I think Brenda should have got one too.
And I think Brenda should have got one too, because she's always backing him. So uh, just phenomenal that, that we continue to, our community continues to have these great human beings with us. Um, I also spoke Maggie, who's part of our chamber, and I don't know if everybody knows Maggie, but she's a phenomenal young lady who, who works here in town. Um, she just got a full scholarship to do her masters in um, nonprofit leadership. And she does a huge amount of work here in Sickamas outside of her work in Sickamas. So again, just a huge asset we have here. I met with both PACs, I met with Dean, and I had a tour of the medical center, which is looking pretty spiffy. I'm excited. That's about it. I've been doing lots of farm work.
Oh, good for you. Excellent. Counselor Bushel, oh, Counselor Bushel before you. Um, Dave, have you been out to the new medical center?
Of course, I do that, sorry.
Just here on Main Street. Got to get him up. Should probably, can we arrange a tour while he's here? Can Karen maybe? So it's, it's going to be open in May, so um, you can wait till May grand opening, or if you'd like to go for a tour, we might be able to get Karen to take you for a quick tour. Would you like a quick tour? Want to reach out to Karen and see if, see if she can uh, take Dave for a quick tour? That'd be great. Yeah, ten million dollar facility. District of Sickamas is running it.
Thirteen.
When we um,
And part, in partnership with this flat scene.
In partnership. Good. Counselor Bushel, take it away.
Yeah, see, the chair, it's been kind of quiet. Um, we had a planning and development committee meeting. Uh, it was the first time that uh, Counselor Bailey was uh, chair. I've been chairing it for the last couple of years, so it was good to see the new chair. Uh, it went very well. Um, busy right, doing our newsletter, getting our newsletter ready for the municipality or for the community. Um, Chamber of Commerce, I went to the AGM last night, and uh, was presented a very nice medal. I'm kind of in the elite, the class with Pam. Pam has the Queen, Queen's Medal and uh, and Bob, Bob got one from Greg Tylo. I guess that was la- this year, last year, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so holy moly.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Yeah, it was kind of neat. And uh, other than that, yeah, I went through the uh, tour on the uh, on the uh, medical center. It's really coming along, looking good. So looking forward to that opening up really quickly, and yeah, other than that, that's about it. Okay?
Thanks.
Yeah, also went to the AGM for the chamber and uh, also planning a development. Few other emails from constituents, some issues, but nothing too much. Just been focusing on business recently, so. Getting ready for the summer season.
A year.
Everybody is going to start getting ready for the summer season, so hopefully, we have a really good one. And uh, these tariffs and everything else don't actually hurt us too much, but um, I think time will tell. Anything, that's it.
Yeah, I was there to uh, at the chamber to, to congratulate uh, Gord on his medal. And that was pretty exciting. Um, and uh, I attended the interagency here on the eighteenth. And I just want to say that it's uh, the interagency is, is grown and grown. And uh, we have probably upwards of thirty uh, that uh, participate every month, either in person or on Zoom, and then another seventy-five or so that are, are wanting the minutes from that interagency. So it's a, it's really a well-attended and uh, well-thought-of uh, endeavor. Started by Donna Heldes, and I have to say, and, and EVCS, together we started that. So Donna's uh, Donna's the great leader. And um, I want to thank Jamie. Jamie has been doing the tech for us here on that meeting. And I really want to just say thank you to, to Jamie for her technical support, because the rest of us are oldies and we're not very technical. Donna just appreciates, and um, and on the nineteenth, uh, I did do the walking tour of the new Community Health Center, and that was pretty special. Um, and then uh, on the, the next day, on the Thursday, I participated by Zoom with the B C Rural Health Network. Um, and uh, that's an organization that, that has really been doing a lot of advocacy for rural access to services, uh, and, and for rural, small rural communities and re- and remote communities in B C. So that was really good, and Siobhan just informed me that, isn't that a riot? You said a riot was sitting on that. So we've got a young, and I didn't realize that. You just told me that last night, so that's awesome. We've got some young locals that are, that are joining that.
Yeah. Hey, I think Karen can take Dave now. If, Dave, if you want to go for the tour, Karen's gonna, Dean will get you all hooked up there. Thank you so much for being here, Dave. Thank you. I forgot about the chamber last night, and I even got a reminder yesterday. I just got back from Edmonton on Sunday night, and I am, I apologize to the chamber. Congratulations on the award. It is, I've been flat out since I got home, so, uh, no excuses, but um, I did, I totally forgot. But however, uh, to that point, I went to a boat show in Edmonton. And, you know, it, it feels, just on the tourism side, before I get into my mayor stuff, I'll put on my other hat. Um, it feels like it's positive. It feels positive there, you know? Um, I, a lot of, taken a lot of bookings. I think we're going to have a busy summer here. I feel like we're going to have a busy, busy summer. Um, the dealers in Edmonton, and most, let's face it, a lot of uh, wearing my other hat right now, a lot of mortgage customers are um, from Calgary or Edmonton. So it just, it, it felt good and it felt, it felt positive, so I think, um, I think we will have uh, some traffic. Um, and as I said in my uh, counselor newsletter, I said, just because we have construction going on here in Sickamas doesn't mean that Sickamas is closed, we don't have any activities. So we have as many activities as we normally have, if not more, and we are open for business. And I want to continue sharing that message and shouting that off the rooftops, that we are open for business and highway construction is highway construction. It's there every summer, all over. So embrace it, don't fight it, just embrace it. Um, I met with uh, Dean, and as I said, Dean and Bianca and I met with uh, Steve Mosatti. Is that how I pronounce his name? He is the Parliamentary Secretary of Rural Development. Um, and Adina Brown, who is?
Oh, I don't know what was her.
Imperial Health?
No.
No.
No, she's finance, she's a minister, she's with the Minister of Finance.
Okay.
Department.
She's assigned as support for the Parliamentary.
Yeah, I'm kind of getting there. Um, Adina, anyway, it was um, it was a very positive um, uh, tour. Uh, they're very impressed with everything that we're doing in Sickamas. There might be, they might be able to help us with something, so um,
Sorry. Her title is, she has two titles under her, and serial advisor to Minister Brenda Bailey, which is Minister of Finance, and staff support for uh, Mr. Morsette. Uh, yes, in rural development, so first two hats she wears.
So, yes, it was, it was positive. And took them for the tour of the Sickamas Health Center, and just explained other things that we've done in town or things that we're going to do. So it was um, it was good, and attended the CSRD board meeting last Thursday. Um, nothing earth-shattering there to report, but um, the, the minutes are attached if anyone uh, wants to, to catch up. And um, tomorrow I have, as I told you last, before the last council meeting, we met with a hotelier. A meeting with another potential hotelier tomorrow, so that's pretty exciting that, you know, this stuff is, is starting to happen again. So um, that's all positive. Anyway, that's it from me. Do we have anyone in the gallery? Online that has any questions? Do we have anyone online today? Bianca?
No one that's raising their hand.
Okay, well then, let's call the ball. We will um, move, oh, no, I'll get out of this first. I'd like to adjourn the uh, Committee of Hall meeting at two twenty, on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Could I get a mover? Counselor Bushel, Counselor Rich, all in favor? And Committee of the Hall is closed. Thanks, thanks, everyone. Kate, do we have to wait to three to go in camera? Yes.
No, we have a cow in camera.
You can do cow in cameras, reopen the meeting.
Oh, I can go cow now. Cow, now?
Cow, cow.
Okay, let's go cow. Guys, um, does anyone want to?
Quickly reinitiate.
Five minutes, initiate the meeting. Re-initiate the cow and can.
Do you want me to go back into cow and then go in-camera cow? I can't go in-camera cow right from cat, no. So, okay, I'm going to take all that last part back. Okay? Okay, so forget that we closed that. We are going to call. And we're, um, we're going to recommend that the in-camera council meeting agenda from March twelfth, five twenty-five be approved as circulated. Counselor Beach. Counselor Bushel.
We just have to re-initiate your cow meeting, so bring the meeting to order first. You're kind of starting at one. And then once you brought it to order, you can enter, move to.
So I'm going to go back to, okay, so we're going to call the cow meeting back to order. We're going to call the cow meeting back to order twenty, but two, twenty-one on Wednesday, March the twenty-sixth. Could I get a mover? Counselor Bushel, Counselor Beach, all in favor. Now we're going to move.
Now we're slipping ahead to nine, and you're in camera, and moving in camera based on the.
Recommendation that council exercise its authority under the community charter and move in-camera under the following section. Ninety-one I, information that is prohibited or information if, that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section twenty-one of the Freedom of Information and Protective of Privacy Act. Could I get a mover? Counselor Bushel, Counselor Beach, all in favor.